Ladies and gentlemen, we welcome you to the October 11th Troy City Council Meeting. This evening, we are very pleased to have with us Father Joseph Entapis of the Saint Joseph Antichrist Orthodox Church, and he will give us our invocation, and that will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Father, if you'll come forward, please rise.
O Lord, our God, we ask you to grant our civic leaders and elected officials the peace from above as they take part in this meeting. Help the mayor and the members of our city council seek your will in all endeavors. Bless their gathering and guide them to be productive and fruitful in the areas of their commissions and public service. Teach them to engage in harmony, knowing that nothing takes place except what you allow it to happen. Lead their thoughts and decisions in words and creative deeds. Help those who are gathered here to remember that nothing can accidentally take place. May the citizens and residents of our city enjoy peace and traculity, safety and security. Teach us, O Lord, to act with resolution and wisdom without causing bitterness or pain. Give our civil authorities the courage to accomplish their tasks and duties and guide us so we may pray in every deed we accomplish. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Father. We appreciate you taking your time to come this evening. May we have the roll call, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Mayor Schilling?
Here.
Councilmember Beltrameen?
Here.
Fleming?
Howellak?
Here.
Kerwin?
Here.
McGuinness?
Here.
Slater?
Here.
Form present.
Madam Mayor?
Councilwoman Beltrameen?
I would move that we excuse Mayor Protem Fleming. He is out of the county due to a death in the family. Support.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Beltrameen and a second by Councilwoman McGuinness that we excuse Mayor Protem Fleming being out of the county due to death in the family. Discussion?
Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Kerwin?
I just want to point out that I've been objecting to the practice of this move to excuse for a long time. I think it's bad public policy. I'm aware of other commissions, boards throughout the state in our own city that don't move to excuse but simply list who is present and who is absent. The only place we can do our businesses during the time that we're empowered as a council. So as a matter of public policy and consistency, for whatever excuse someone is here for, I will not support it. I know that others have strong public policy issues on other things. Later on in this very agenda, we'll have a question on abatement. We have a council member who feels strongly abatement should simply be applied universally, and that would be the most fair thing to do. It's not personal, and he makes that very clear. It has nothing to do with the number of jobs. It's just a matter of consistency that the policy should be applied to everyone. I feel the same way about this. Simply listing those who are here and those who are not would be the best public policy. So this is nothing personal. I simply be voting no on the excuse.
Anyone else? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltrameen?
Yes.
Howellak?
Yes.
Kerwin?
No.
McGuinness?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Motion passes. This evening, we begin with three certificates of recognition and special presentations, and our first one, Suzanne Wiggins, Executive Director of the Paint Creek Center for the Arts. She's going to give a presentation regarding the Regional Arts Award. Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you for allowing me to be here this evening. Hopefully, you're aware of Paint Creek Center for the Arts. We're a nonprofit regional arts center located in Rochester, and we have great news. In March of 2011, we'll be implementing a new opportunity called the Regional Arts and Culture Awards, and we're presently working with the eight major municipalities in our service region to provide an opportunity for these municipalities, including Troy, to shine a positive light on community members, whether they be residents or businesses, that are fostering arts and culture in their own individual community. And so the event ceremony that will take place on March 24th of 2011 will include up to eight mayor's arts award for each of the municipalities that are participating, and then overriding distinguished regional arts award presented by Paint Creek. And I'm happy to announce that the 2011 award will be presented to L. Brooks Patterson for his work with art speaks and eats and the film industry in our region. The award ceremony is not a fundraiser. It's basically just a positive opportunity to shine a light on those individuals who, whether it be by service and volunteer hours, financial investment, or whatever the individual municipalities choose, to shine a light on the work that they're doing to help arts and culture enrich their own individual communities. So basically, what I'm here tonight to do is ask the city of Troy support, and what we would ask for your participation is the first would be to select an award winner and communicate the name of that individual or business to Paint Creek by November 15. We would ask that you embrace the awards and help promote it using the city's newsletter or website, and then finally, just that we would have representation by the city that evening, not only in support of the award winner that you've selected, but also just to show the importance of arts and culture in a community. So basically, that's what I'm here to do, to hopefully get the city of Troy's support and participation in our March 2011 event ceremony.
Thank you. And are you going to send in all of the written information? If you'd send it to our Community Affairs Director, and then she'll send it to us, and we'll make a decision about that?
She actually already has that, so she can communicate that as soon as possible.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Speaking of our Community Affairs Director, Cindy Stewart, our Community Affairs Director, is going to present a check to Ann Kamiski. No, but Ann's not here. Ann has changed.
Ann is home with Mike Kerr. With her family.
Okay. Mike Kerr is here, and this is for the Troy Community Coalition from the City of Troy Employees Casual for a Cause program.
Yep, well, she's said everything I was going to say. But the Troy employees, we do Casual for a Cause on Fridays and for July and August. We raise money, and we have $681 to give to the Troy Community Coalition for the Prevention of Drug and Alcohol Abuse, which is a very worthwhile organization. Mike?
Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen, the City Council and state government. Thank you very much. I'm amazed. I'm sorry. I apologize for Ann for not being able to attend tonight. She is a family emergency, and I'm not nearly as good-looking. But however, thank you very much. It never ceases to astound me on the professional employees that we have working for this community and to step forward and do something like this. It's greatly appreciated. There's nobody in this room or in this city that's not affected by alcohol or drug abuse on a regular basis. I'd just like to say that thank you very much for supporting the Troy Community Coalition. We have our major fundraiser of the year on the 28th of October. Mark Ridley is our MC, and he says that the comedian there, Mike Green, is one of the best that he's ever seen. So please, there are tickets still available. We have an online auction going on now. Please visit bidding for good. We have some great items online to help keep us in business here for at least another year, I hope.
Tell them the date.
Online bidding is good until the 14th of October, and Celebrity Night Dinner is on the 28th of October. Thought I mentioned that. Thank you very much. Appreciate this very much, and it goes to a great, great cause and a great effort. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next item is to present a proclamation for the 25th anniversary celebration of the American Polish Cultural Society, and we have two members that are here, one to present this to, so I'll go down to the microphone.
Hi, I am Margaret.
Margaret, come on around here, Margaret. That way, everybody can see you. This is a proclamation, of course, for the 25th anniversary celebration of the American Polish Cultural Society. Whereas, the American Polish Cultural Society was established 25 years ago in 1985 to hold and maintain in the Detroit metropolitan area a Polish center serving as a coordinating site for various Polish-American organizations and other ethnic groups to build, expand, and maintain suitable facilities for the promotion of better Polish-American relations. Whereas, the American Polish Cultural Center, building at 2975 East Maple at Dequinder, right in the corner, was dedicated in 1989, and with the establishment of this cultural center in Troy, the APCS serves as one of the major focal points for Polish culture in southeast Michigan. And whereas, the objectives of the American Polish Cultural Center are to encourage the participation of Polyns... Polonians. You say it so much better than I do. Both American and foreign-born in pursuit of their heritage and culture, and to bring about an awareness of the contributions of Poles and Americans of Polish descent to the world community. And whereas, together with their sister organization, the American Polish Cultural Society, they have presented numerous concerts, fine and folk art exhibits, historic displays... Wonderful display there.
Thank you.
Cultural events, traditional holiday celebrations, and workshops in Polish folk arts. And whereas, the groups house a lead lending library, host Polish language classes and discussion groups, and provide meeting facilities for local community organizations of various ethnic groups. And whereas, the American Polish Cultural Society's first 25 years have resulted in an excellent reputation, thanks to their dedicated volunteer members and their fine staff. Now therefore be resolved, the Troy City Council does hereby congratulate the American Polish Cultural Society on its 25th anniversary and offers best wishes to the APCS on their 25th anniversary banquet on October 17, 2010. Be it further resolved, the city of Troy proudly recognizes the American Polish Cultural Society as an integral and positive part of the community, and proudly recognizes the strength, stability, that the American Polish Cultural Society brings to its membership. Presented this 11th day of October 2010, signed by myself, all the members of City Council.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Do you wish to say a few words?
No, thank you.
No? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And you have a beautiful facility, and folks there always greet everyone so warmly, even if they come for lunch or if they come for an event.
Thank you so much.
Always make them feel at home.
And we hope to see you, but I don't know if you will, but we hope you will attend this event on the 17th.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Next, we go to our regular agenda items, and this evening, we have four public hearings, and the first is an establishment of an Industrial Development District, IDD, for 1462 East Big Beaver, and Mr. Nino Lacari will present for staff. Mr. Lacari, welcome.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, members of council. As you mentioned, there are four public hearings, as is council's policy. We establish the district separately. Many communities have their entire community as a district, so they don't have the extra public hearing. This gives council a little more control over where to place the exemptions for the taxes. As per that policy, we will present the bulk of the information you need to make a decision on the district side of the public hearing. The first one is for Witsenman USA LLC. Both of these abatements are relatively large investments. Very happy to present these to you. They're moving into 1201 Stevenson, and they intend to purchase over $11 million worth of equipment, and also, most critically, they're going to add 75 new jobs to the city of Troy. Their abatement would be for 10 years. Over the life of this abatement, without any tax abatement, they would pay about $431,000 in taxes, of which $137,000 would be city taxes. The 50% abatement amounts to a total savings to them of $215,000, of which about $69,000 are city taxes. I had a short conversation with Councilwoman McGuinness earlier, and I should point out, because I do take it for granted quite often, that you're as familiar with the law as I am. The state law allows them a two-year buildup time. So when you grant a 10-year abatement, it's really a 12-year abatement. If you grant a 12-year abatement, it's a 14-year abatement. That would be the maximum amount of time anyone could get for these abatements. So this abatement is for 10 years. Excuse me. Assuming a two-year buildup, they would have a 12-year abatement based on this. And I can answer any questions you might have. I should point out that Mrs. Valentic and Mr. Pizarczyk are here. He's with Witsenman USA, and Pam plays a big part in all of these abatements, and they also will be able to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Council, do you have questions at this time?
Mayor?
Your staff. Councilman Howellak?
Is...I don't know if you've seen the printed agenda yet, but it appears that there's a difference in address between the header and resolution. It is not 1462 East Big Beaver, is it?
No, it's 1201. I'm sorry. I did not see that. I don't...I can't explain how they got there, but it is 1201 Stevenson.
Thank you for catching that, Councilman Howellak. Any other questions? If not, then I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak on this item? Seeing none, then I'll close the public hearing and return it to the council for a resolution. Councilwoman Kerwin?
I would request that Troy City Council hereby establishes an Industrial Development District, IDD, for a property known as 1201 Stevenson, Troy, Michigan, 480831116, parcel number 88-20-35-102-038, in accordance with City Council Policy Resolution Number 2009-02-042, and be it further resolved that the city clerk shall forward a copy of this resolution to the State Tax Commission, Treasury Building, PO Box 30471, Lansing, Michigan, 489097971.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Move by Councilwoman Kerwin, seconded by Councilwoman Beltrameen, that we approve the resolution as printed and read. Discussion of the item?
Mayor?
Councilman Howellak?
No, I think it's important in order to attract businesses to have a friendly environment, not just for businesses, but also for people. So we want to be attractive to...for people to live and for businesses to locate here as well. My concern, as all of you, I'm sure, know by now, with abatements is that it's essentially an equitable reduction in property taxes. One business gets a reduction in their property taxes, and every other property owner in the city maintains whatever it is that they're paying. And so, well, I really appreciate the business coming here, and I think that it's a good group of people, and I think they're going to be successful here in Troy. I cannot support this or any of the other three resolutions. I just want to say that because, you know, it's...it kind of begs the question when somebody votes no on a resolution. So I just wanted to explain that. However, if anybody from the company has any suggestions about how Troy could improve or how we can make it a better place for you to do business, please let us know. Thank you.
Further discussion of the item? As indicated, this is one of the tools that the state government has provided to cities in order to provide some incentive for businesses, and if they qualify, businesses can apply for this. And so council, by resolution, has provided for this, but of course, they must meet the standard, and we're always encouraged when businesses want to either develop further on property that they have within Troy or come in and purchase more property. Further discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilmember Beltrameen?
Yes.
Howellak?
No.
Kerwin?
Yes.
McGuinness?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes. Motion passes. Our second public hearing is the granting of an industrial facilities exemption certificate for Witsenman USA LLC at 1201 Stevenson. Mr. Lacari, do you have anything further to add? These two items are tied together.
They're tied.
Yes.
Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Beltrameen?
I have a question for Mr. Lacari.
Mr. Lacari?
And because this deals with the actual money, I waited to ask it now. I noticed in this case, we are converting from euros to US dollars. When does that conversion for abatement purposes take place? Today, at the time of the application, when the equipment's installed, when it's purchased?
It will be at the end of the two-year period or any December 31st prior to that when they are finished. In other words, it's a December 31st date when they will have to provide the actual finish number. It could be this December 31st, or it could be two more December 31st.
And will the exchange rate be based on December 31st, the time of purchase?
That current rate, yes, that current rate.
All right, thank you.
Any other...could we have a resolution?
Mayor?
Councilman Slater?
I'll move the resolution as printed.
Support.
Move by Councilman Slater, seconded by Councilwoman McGuinness, that we approve the resolution as printed. Discussion? The vote, then, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilmember Howellak?
No.
Kerwin?
Yes.
McGuinness?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltrameen?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next is establishment of an IDD, Industrial Development District, for another company, and this is at 1870 through 1932 Technology. Mr. Lacari will present.
Thank you again, Madam Mayor. This is a pretty exciting one here. Magna, who's been a longtime corporate citizen of Troy, is opening up an entire new branch. They're going into powertrain technology. They're leasing a building that's been vacant for about four years. They've done quite a bit of renovation, although the landlord did pay for that. That's why there's no real estate abatement being asked for in this particular abatement. But it's a substantial investment for them also. It's $8.7 million, and the kicker on this one is 103 new jobs to the city of Troy. Very, very powerful action by them. I mean, they did not want to go anywhere else. They wanted to be here in Troy. They liked being here in Troy, and we were very happy to be able to offer them something like this. And I must apologize for them. As you might recall, we had to postpone this public hearing. Unfortunately, when I did that, it conflicted with several of the executive schedules, and they are not able to be here. I would hope that their standing in the community would offer them a little relief in that regard, because it was not their fault. It was my own. Again, they're going to invest about $8.8 million. This would be an 11-year abatement for them. The total taxes over that amount of time would be $344,000, of which about $109,000 are city taxes. So they would be saving over the life of the abatement $172,000, and about $55,000 of that are city taxes that would be saved to them. Again, they do have a 10-year lease. The lease is renewable for a four- or five-year option, so this could be a 30-year lease involved in this facility. So obviously, management and staff would recommend approval of this abatement, and I can answer any questions you might have.
Questions? For Mr. Lacari? Councilwoman Kerwin?
General questions about abatements.
Yes, ma'am.
I know that we recently expanded our abatements. Where do we fit now in terms of cities making offering to either redevelopment or attraction in terms of abatements?
We're doing quite well now, now that we match what pretty much every other community has. There aren't any cities of our size or in our general area that do not offer real property abatement, and we had lagged behind on that issue for quite some time. And I believe that policy was fair at that point in time. In this economy now, we're being approached by several corporations. It's very promising, the way the abatement change, the policy change that the council made, is being reacted by the business community. They're very eager to speak with us now. So I know for sure that I have three more abatements that are supposedly coming in before the end of the year. I have one on my desk right now. It's not a large abatement, but it's an abatement for a company that otherwise would not be here in Troy, and they do intend to bring about 25 jobs with them. So outside of the fact that we don't gain a lot of tax revenue, but the revenue we do gain is revenue we would not have otherwise, they're bringing in a lot of jobs, and that translates well for the rest of the community. I mean, if you can get one out of 10 of those people to move here, it's an upside for it.
Thank you.
Further questions? Just a comment from me. When I noticed the address there on Technology Drive, we've had quite a few businesses come into that area, and I recall when we improved the roads in that area, and for those businesses that had been there for a long time, they were very pleased, and the new ones going in there, of course, are, and they like that synergy of being close by those other similar businesses.
Absolutely, and that's why they locate there. As you'll recall, there's battery technology in there. There's engineering firms in there. All of those firms complement each other.
Thank you. Do we have a resolution before us?
Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Kerwin?
I would request that Troy City Council hereby establishes an Industrial Development District, IDD, for a property known as 1870 to 1932 Technology, Troy, Michigan, 480834242, parcel number 88-20-35-276-006, in accordance with City Council Policy Resolution Number 2009-02-042, and be it further resolved that the city clerk shall forward a copy of this resolution to the State Tax Commission, Treasury Building, PO Box 30471, Lansing, Michigan, 489097971.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Move by Councilwoman Kerwin, seconded by Councilwoman Beltrameen, that we approve the resolution as printed and read. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilmember Kerwin?
Yes.
McGuinness?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltrameen?
Yes.
Howellak?
No.
Motion passes. Our next public hearing is the granting of an industrial facilities exemption certificate for Magna Powertrain at 1870 through 1932 Technology. And I apologize, I did not open the public hearing on the last one. I'm doing so now on this one. Anyone wish to speak on this? Was there anyone here that was on the tied-in item before that I neglected to call on? I will call on you if you so wish to speak. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and return it to the council table for a resolution.
Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Beltrameen?
Before we move on, could we have a clarification from the clerk on how much trouble we might be in because of no opening of the public hearing before?
Correct. Yes, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Because that's not active motion on the floor, we should dispense with this one here, and then afterwards, it probably would be advisable to open the public hearing and then re-vote on that issue.
Thank you. I apologize for that. Continuing on then with this one. Does someone want to move the resolution?
Mayor?
Councilman Slater?
I'll move the resolution as printed.
Support.
Move by Councilman Slater, seconded by Councilwoman McGuinness, that we approve the resolution as printed. Discussion? The vote, please, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilmember McGuinness?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltrameen?
Yes.
Howellak?
No.
Kerwin?
Yes.
Motion passes. I'll go back to E3, and I'm opening the public hearing on the establishment of an Industrial Development District at 1870 through 1932 Technology Drive. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak on this? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and return to the council table. Mrs. Bartholomew, do we need to have another vote?
Yes, we should, but we need to do that in the form of a reconsideration, so we can have a motion to reconsider and then vote.
Could we have a motion to reconsider?
Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Beltrameen?
I would move that council reconsider the vote... I would move that council reconsider the vote just taken on E3, the establishment of industrial development district at 1820-1932 Technology Drive.
Support.
Wait.
1870.
1870.
That's what it says.
1870 through 1932. Okay. Moved by Councilwoman Beltrameini, seconded by Councilwoman Howarlag, that we reconsider this item. Discussion? The vote on reconsideration, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltrameini?
Yes.
Howarlag?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion passes. Then could we have the resolution before us? Again, we don't need to read it again, but we need to have it moved.
Point of order.
Do we do have to?
You do not need to have it moved. You just need to re-vote on it.
Okay, thank you. The vote then, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltrameini?
Yes.
Howarlag?
No.
Kerwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
We haven't had one of those in a long time on every consideration of a motion. I apologize for the mix-up, folks. Next, we're going to have to have a resolution for suspension of the rules, because we have 16 speakers that have signed up to speak. So I move to suspend the rules.
Support.
Moved by the chair, seconded by Councilwoman Kerwin. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilmember Beltrameini?
Yes.
Howarlag?
No.
Kerwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes. Motion passes. I move to change the time limit for speakers under public comment from five minutes to three minutes due to the number of people that have signed up as pursuant our council rules.
Support.
Moved by the chair, seconded by Councilwoman Kerwin. Discussion?
Mayor.
Councilwoman Howarlag?
I would rather allow people to speak for five minutes than three, so I'll be voting no.
Further discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilmember Howarlag?
No.
Kerwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltrameini?
Yes.
Motion passes. Under public comment, these comment can be on agenda items or items that are not on the agenda. They can be on any regular business or consent agenda item. And because we have that number of people, I'll do the same thing of calling the five names where people line up in the middle of the aisle there. It seems to move along quickly that way. So the first five speakers, please, in this order are Janice Daniels, Gordon Shepke, Dr. Cool Gauri, Joanne Thompson, and Karen Fabian. If you would, please line up in that order. And I also remind folks that if you have a cellphone or electronic device, that you turn it off in the council chambers. Thank you. Ms. Daniels?
Good evening. I'd like to say in aside, I'd wish we could learn how to clone Councilwoman Howarlag and add three seats to the council, so his voice of reason could have some weight on the council. My intention here, though, this evening, is simply to state the facts that the tax and spenders don't want the Troy citizens to know. First of all, I need to clarify an issue that I was challenged on last week, and that is that 1.75 million of the $9.4 million set aside in the city budget for a transit center to nowhere that may never be built is city money and could be used to fund the library, if only for one year, so that we would have an opportunity to fully explore our options and to see where our country's economic future is going. Then there's $1.11 million set aside in the budget for civic center improvement. There's $665,000 set aside for park development. And I don't hesitate to remind everyone that there are 20 city government employees whose total combined earning compensation packages exceed $3.5 million a year. Why is that? And don't tell me that compared to a CEO of a Fortune 500 company, that's chump change. A Fortune 500 company CEO manages job creation and wealth creation. The city government does the bidding of the people, and that is all. Now, you tell me you can't find $2 million to fund our library? You don't want to find $2 million to fund our library, because you used the library as a scare tactic bargaining chip last February, and you lost. And now you're trying to save face on the backs of the taxpayers once again. And the tax and spenders in this city don't have a plan, or they're intentionally hiding their plan. It's kind of like Nancy Pelosi says, "It seems like the only way that we're going to find out what's in the tax increase proposal is if we vote on it." And I say, "No way, not today." All the tax and spenders are doing is continuing the scare tactics, as if they have some secret knowledge that the rest of us taxpayers don't have. And by the way, in my 21 years of selling real estate, I have never once been asked if a city had a world-class library, or if a city had a library at all when deciding to move into a city. But a major, important issue to people, homeowners and businesses across this country throughout the ages, has been, "How am I going to be able to afford the taxes to live or conduct business in that city?" And that's a fact. And another fact is that property values decline when people are forced out of their homes because they can't handle the financial burden of home ownership, not because a library has to be more efficient. Trust me on that. I would encourage all of the citizens of Troy not to be fooled by the emotional rhetoric that is swirling around this town from adults and children alike right now. Focus on the facts. Vote no on all four tax increase proposals, and help us save the library with no new taxes. Thank you.
Next, Mr. Shepke.
Thank you. First of all, I am not a member of Troy Citizens United, but I'm here to encourage the voters to vote no on the tax proposals, all four of them. The city of Troy should fund and run the Troy Library. I don't subscribe to the lemming theory about having a board, because other cities are doing it, Troy must do it too. The wrong board during a two-year term of office can do a lot of harm. Look at what's happened in Washington, D.C. with Total Power. Total Power corrupts. We demand more fiduciary accountability of our leaders, and we are getting, take for granted, just for granted, our city managers' option one and option two, that the board, that the, that the, anyway, this year, this board has approved. We should have across-the-board cuts for all departments to equalize the downside impact on the taxpayers, instead of being, instead of using the promise of closing our beloved library with its yet-to-be-built $100,000 drop box as the best solution. Going along with accountability, our city manager's budget has increased 57% in 2010, 2011, showing typical restraint. I don't understand a $1.8 million increase in the Troy Police Department, how that can be frugal. Also, with the 10% to 13% 401 employee increases in the budget. Because many of us residents demand accountability and responsibility on our elected leaders, we are called heartless, the anti-tax crowd, liars, and cheats. Businesses are closing. Jobs are being lost. We don't need new taxes on our surviving businesses to further overburden our commercial tax partners, trying to keep their doors open. Again, incorporated in the library budget is the museum and the nature center, and this will be defunded once a board's established. And if they can't come up with other funding with creative means, they too will have to shut their doors. What do we need, another board to run these two entities? I think it's ridiculous. I'm encouraging the voters to vote no. Thank you.
Our next speaker, Dr. Gauri? Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Feel free to adjust the microphone if you wish. There, thank you.
My name is Gul Gauri, and lived, we have lived in the city of Troy for the last 25 years. And I have spent most of my time in libraries, working in them, designing them, building them, managing them, and of course, using them. I stand before you as a person who has extremely benefited from libraries, and I'm standing in support of proposal one. Having grown in extreme rural area with no running water, no power, with high school nine miles away, I have worked in responsible positions and was invited by the University of Minnesota here, and retired from McCombe Community College, a dean of the college. Let me start with analysis of return on investment in libraries. While out-of-pocket cost of mileage and other manufactured figures, manufactured figures are floating around, the true picture has sadly been missing. Every lab, every family invariably spends some money on reading, watching, and listening to various media to stay informed and be responsible as a citizen in necessity, in necessity today. If facilities and services offered in the library are received and bought by, from the outside sources, non-laboratory sources, it's, it'll cost more than five times the $88, $99,000, which we are trying to propose now. It costs about $58 per year, each year, resident, counting the current budget of the library and the city population as a whole. It's $58,000, $58 per person for each resident it costs us today, a Troy Public Library. Can you imagine any cheaper service ware as we can buy? On average, based on the 1.1 million books checked out in the year 2006, 2007, each resident checks out about 15 books, media, per year, which if bought in outside market will cost about, roughly about $500. So compare those $500 to the $99, which we are proposing as a tax per year, this can have a very good, good buy and good purchase. This information I'm sharing with you is just books and media alone, not including other services used by our citizens. Again, services received and bought from outside sources are only partial and limited, and no guarantee of satisfaction or quality. One study estimated that it costs pre-1999, $135 per month to family to maintain their library and reading needs. A 2004 Florida study estimated that about $6.54 were returned investment, with $1 invested in the library. So my proposal here is that the major challenge before us is to keep the library open, and I would strongly suggest we vote proposal one, and say no on proposal two, three, and four. Thank you very much.
Next, we have Joanne Thompson, and then we'll have Karen Fabian. And before Karen Fabian speaks, I'll call the next five people. Yes.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of the boards and committees and the decisions on them, but I see that they're not on the agenda.
No.
So, is there any idea when it will be?
It'll be a study session on the agenda the next meeting.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
You'd like to return for that? Thank you. Or you can speak on it tonight, but if you want to hear, okay. Karen Fabian? And before she starts speaking, let me say the next five names. Would you please line up in, behind her? Pam Brady, Gerard Stager, Glenn Ellis, Grace Ellis, and Judy Ellis. Mrs. Fabian?
Thank you. My name is Karen Fabian. I'm here this evening on behalf of the League of Women Voters, Troy. I have two pieces of information I would like to share with the board and with the residents of Troy. The first is some very happy news. The voter guides are now available. They are at the city clerk's office, and they are at the Troy Public Library and the Troy Community Center, for anyone who would like to take one. They are also available online, and you may download or read them, or online at the League of Women Voters website. I would also like to invite the council and residents to attend a, an informational forum that we are holding this Thursday. It is on the issue of the library. It will be held at 7:30 at the Troy Community Center. We will have a panel to answer questions, and we encourage citizens to come and to ask questions and to become informed on this very important issue. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Pam, your timing was great. Pam Brady is our next speaker.
Mayor, council, city staff, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Pam Brady, president of the League of Women Voters of Troy area. And I'd like to say that we have spent the entire summer studying the library and the various issues involved. And it was at the direction of the board at our annual meeting that we do so. Karen Fabian was kind enough to chair that committee, and the result of that committee was that we have this program, and that is why we're having it. So I'm hoping that everybody will come, bring your questions. We will have a one-hour program, and the questions will come from the audience. Thank you.
And that's on October?
That's October, this Thursday, October 14th, 7:30, at the Troy Community Center, room 304. It will be cablecast at CMN, and Charlie Langton will be our moderator. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Gerard Stager.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor, and members of council. Madam Mayor, the city of Troy now has about 81,000 people, and that's based on a 2006 census estimate. Makes you wonder, back in the 1870s, what was the population of Troy? Because the library proposals are based on an 1877 law. And the population of Troy township back in the 1870 census was 1,541 people. So the population of Troy has grown more than 52 times since then. These ballot proposals got on the ballot with just 50 signatures. And that was probably a lot of people back then, when Troy only had 1,500 people. But if you were to extrapolate it to today's population, it would be over 2,600 people, somewhat similar to the signatures you now need for an ordinance petition or a charter change petition. We need to look closely at this old 1877 law, because everybody's for the library, but we have two alternatives. Do we want a substantial mileage increase, or do we want the petition for an ordinance change that would make the library a necessary part of the city of Troy? This old 1877 law was designed for communities without a library. It would hurt the library. Here's how. All four ballot proposals are based on Section 10A of Public Act 164 from 1877. And Section 10A has four paragraphs, and it says in there, "The new library board must inform city council no later than the first Monday in September of what tax to bill in the next billing cycle." And of course, the city of Troy sends out bills every July. It is now past September of 2010. The library board doesn't exist. They can't put a tax to the city to collect next July of 2011. The first next opportunity would be July of 2012. If any of the ballot proposals pass, that means that the library would be closed for at least one full year. This was not a well-thought-out idea for the city of Troy. These ballot proposals are a bad idea. The law's poorly written, and it won't work for Troy. Also, in this Section 10A of that old 1877 law, it reads that, "Not right away, but after new library board is seated, they have the power to levy not just what might be voted in, like .985 mills or .885 mills, but rather, they have the power to assess two full mills without a public vote, and can override a tax limitation amendment in a city." The law's poorly written, but certainly reads that way, and that could hold up in court. So we could have the tax more than doubled without a public vote. We really don't want that in Troy. These library proposals are expensive. These library proposals are expensive. They'll cost a typical homeowner over a thousand dollars worth of life of the village, based on what we're assessed now. And you can bet that will be up 10 years from now. We should support the alternative proposal, the alternative petition, and vote no on all four proposals. Information is at TroyCitizensUnited.org. And thanks, Mayor, and members of council.
Next, Glenn Ellis.
Mayor, council, thank you for your time. As a 14-year resident of Troy, I've enjoyed the excellent services of the city, including an award-winning library. In 2009, with full funding, the Troy Library was number two in the state and number 10 in the nation. This kind of recognition, recognition is a great drawing point for people considering residency in Troy. This in turn increases and maintains home values and quality of life in the city. Since there is not funding in the current budget to maintain a quality library, I support voting yes on the first library proposal that will be on the ballot November 2nd to vote yes on Proposal One. Thank you for your time.
You. Next, Grace Ellis, and then Julie Ellis. Do I have it in the right order? Feel free to adjust the microphone. Go ahead, you'll be fine. It's actually kind of fun to talk in the, in the, just talk like you're going to talk in school. If I were to call on you and you had any answer you wanted to give, okay? I know you can do it. Are you in second grade? First grade?
Third.
Third grade? Oh, then I know you're ready. Come on, give us your best here. Okay. Maybe after mom's done, okay? Look how, you see, when mom does it, it's really easy. Go ahead.
Troy is number two in Michigan is having the most diverse ethnic population. Why are internationals attracted to Troy? It's our schools and our city services, which includes the library. Unfortunately, many of their voices won't be heard on November 2nd because they aren't citizens yet. However, they are the ones who help Troy's schools to such high academic acclaim both in our state and nationally. Also, we pay school taxes, but because we homeschool, we don't have school libraries available to us. The city library is essential for us. Like the previous speakers, we don't want to pay more taxes. Who does? However, we live in Michigan and we've been doing the research on other cities and, and libraries and found there's only four libraries left that are our size or larger that are operated under the city. We need to make it an independent library, like 38 other libraries already are that are our size or larger. And Rochester Hills, Clinton McComb, Bloomfield Township are beautiful examples of independent libraries that are, are run by a board and would be just like a school board like we have. So we are going to be voting yes on Proposal One to keep our library open and the international community to continue growing. And we'll be voting no on the other three library proposals.
Thank you. Your daughter, one more chance? You want to talk? Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Grace Ellis and I'm eight, so I can't vote. But if I could, I would vote yes for the library because I like the summer reading program and I like borrowing videos and books. And sometimes I like going down to the basement to buy books. I hope the library can stay open.
Thank you. See how well you did? Next time will be even easier. Okay, the next five people are Sharon McDonald, Erin Green, Steve Toth, Ed Kempen, and Linda Kyma. Sharon McDonald and then Erin Green. Thank you. Yes, adjust the mic back up. There you go.
I'm still pretty short. To Ms. Daniels, I'd say that the Troy Citizens United four-page flyer out right now does claim that there's $9 million of Troy money in the budget. And it's your document, so I guess you could change that. Also, imagine that we pro-library people keep dragging children into this debate. What could children possibly have to do with a library? My name is Sharon McDonald and I support keeping our library open. That's why I support Proposal One. It's the only option. I have two children in elementary school here. My older daughter is in fourth grade and is just beginning to get lots of homework. In the years ahead, she's going to need our library to study in. I only hope it will be there for her. Because as of next July, there will be no more Troy library. It will be an empty building and my house will be worth less than ever unless we approve Proposal One. These folks with Troy Citizens United say they have another option, mandate a 55-hour a week library. Great. Except their mandate fails to mandate a staff, a budget, a building, a level of quality, a location, or any books. Fifty-five hours does not a library make. Their mandate petition is insufficient. It accomplishes nothing but to provide emotional protection for people who want to believe they are doing something to save the library. But they're not. It won't work. And by the way, it could lead to an expensive special election. Have they told petition signers about that? My conclusion has to be that Troy Citizens United wants Troy to fail. Then in the next election cycle, their leaders will be running for the mayor's office and city council claiming that they are the answer to restoring Troy to its former glory. They'll simply hope you all forget that they are the ones who destroyed it in the first place. Talking with my husband about our frustration over the library yesterday, he said it reminded him of a time a political commentator said he hoped our current president would fail at his job of pulling us out of the recession. Why? Because even if it makes us all suffer, makes children go hungry, throws seniors out of work permanently, it would be good for the commentator politically. I believe Troy Citizens United, with their lazily researched four-page flyer filled with the most ridiculous fictions, wants Troy to fail. And they will stop at nothing, including lies. And yes, I know, some say lie is too strong a word. But one example, their flyer says that Proposal One could cost two mills and $86 million. No. Proposal One asks for a cap of .9885 mills, less than one mill. Yet TCU claims it will cost twice as much. That surely isn't truth, right? You take out all the untruths and that would be a half-page flyer. Last February, TCU mailed out a similar four-page flyer days before the millage election. It was filled with exaggeration, disinformation, and frankly, a whole lot of crazy. I will be voting yes on Proposal One and no on the rest.
Our next speaker is Erin Green.
I was here last week. I'm a future resident of Troy and I care very much about both my local public library and the library, which I hope will be my public library for some time. I paid careful attention both last week and this to the comments, both of those belonging to Troy Citizens United and those not, as well as council's comments thereafter. And I noticed a few things. There's some serious inconsistencies. For example, this week, a hundred dollars is not going to break the back of the people who are in dire financial straits. It's going to cost less than that a year in order to keep the library open. You talk about people who are, are having trouble with their taxes, who are having difficulty making ends meet. If, if a hundred dollars a year, that's about eight or nine dollars a month, that's, if that's going to break your bank for the year, then that's one thing. But if that's most people, I'd be really surprised. Janice Daniels' comments earlier were, were absolutely disgusting to me. The city government is a job creation engine. It is the job of the city government to help promote the, the livelihoods of their citizens, to help promote the, the function of, of the city is to better its citizens and part of that function is job creation and, and monetary gain for its citizens. It's, it's in its best interest to help create jobs. That's what it does. Earlier, Janice Daniels also said that she wished there were three councilmen. Howard Lex, and while I, I do appreciate his request that we get five minutes to speak, I do not know why he did initially ask that, he said, that we suspend the rules on being able to speak further. Last week, councilman's later, and these are all quotes, I did check, I looked at the, the online archives, said that we're cash-strapped. And, and we took a look at things. City manager Zerlag, is that correct? Zerlag said that for the past few years, we've been 99% accurate, including this year when looking at the numbers. And in order to have the library as the Troy Citizens United petition requests, you'd have to cut 20 more police officers. Who wants to cut public safety? That's, that's the whole point. If you cut public safety to save the library, you're not helping anybody. But when you're given the option to save both, that's a wonderful thing. Last week, you asked a very good question, Councilman Howard Lex. You asked, "Is it possible that we could still have a city-owned library without having to cut other areas of the city, well, if we levy a mill greater than we have now?" And the city manager responded, "If the taxes were raised, then yes, it could be done." Well, if we're going to raise the taxes anyhow, then shouldn't we have an independent district library that runs itself and that doesn't have to worry about the, the city council? Vote Proposal One.
Our next speaker is Ed Kempen.
Thank you, Mayor, council. Businesses that don't control costs will eventually fail. A lot of city governments have failed to control costs and they have failed and they're struggling. And it's a real challenge, one, there's a collapse in services. A lot of things are being maintained that aren't necessary and we are really struggling here. There's a lot of money being spent in this city, but it's not on the core services that our people really want and need. Our library is one of those core services and we do need to maintain it. But we don't need to continue to spend lavishly on other programs. We need to focus, identify what's important to the citizens of Troy, and deliver. We need to maintain our library and we need to do it without new taxes. Taxes are effective at stimulating growth, attracting people into the area, particularly businesses. I hear that tax abatements are commonplace even here on council because they're effective. And tax abatements or low tax rates in general are also effective at attracting residents into our city and into our homes when we try to sell. We do have several more petitions, petition forms to fill out yet. We're well on our way, but if anybody would like to, we still have more petition forms. So if anybody wants to, you can contact one of the people, either myself or the Troy Citizens United has contact information as well. And also, about the comments, about this, you know, red letter. I mean, I, I took a look at this and there, there are things that aren't directly in that proposal. They're based upon other research and I, I believe that everything that is in here is accurate and it is, it may not be accurate as depicted by the Proposal One people, but based upon all of the evidence that's out there and available, these, this is accurate information and I'll stand by it myself. Recently, a 71-year-old woman who's been a resident of Troy for 38 years, her name is Judy Humphrey, turned in 134 signatures to me. And she's just as frustrated as many of the other citizens are here in this city. She dedicated a lot of time of her own walking through neighborhoods and finding people who cared and cared about their own well-being and everyone else's. And she is concerned about the high tax rates and that is concerned that it's really going to be destructive to the city to keep raising them. I urge everyone to vote no.
Our next speaker, before you start, Mrs. Kyma, I need to call the next five people. Would you come up behind Linda Kyma, please? James Savage, Thomas Burke, Jeannie Stein, and John Witt. Linda Kyma?
Good evening, Mayor, city council. Let me start by saying that Webster's definition of a community is "a group of interacting people living in a common location, traditionally organized around common values. And social cohesion is the bond, the glue, excuse me, that brings people together in said community." Well, you wouldn't know that in Troy. Here we go again, community being torn apart by a bunch of bullies. These bullies are trying to convince the residents of this fine community that we don't need to pay any more money for a library. Well, let's set the facts straight, and I'm taking these facts from the FOCUS information that was recently mailed to residents from Troy Citizens United and the Friends of the Library with no new taxes. I think they call those names oxymorons. First, they say the library is being used as a political pawn. Wrong. The library was part of a reduction plan that was developed back in September 2009 when the previous council was developing the upcoming budget. The reason? Not enough revenue to sustain all the services. Revenues had decreased 30%. That's why Saturday was chosen as the best day to close the library to save money. It's the most expensive day to run the library. Next, creating a new taxing authority to raise city property taxes 30.6%. Legally, two mills may be authorized. This is just a start. This is based on your state equalized value. Wrong. The Board of Trustees, nonpartisan and unpaid citizens, is a non-taxing authority. Also, this millage to create the independent library with the Board of Trustees is only a 2.7% increase over the current 36.69 mills. It's also based on your taxable value, not your equalized. Next, reveal the taxing entity does not have to use the present Troy building, but could build a new library. Wrong. Again, this is not a taxing entity. 100% of the funds from Proposal One are for library operations and services only. Build a new library and run it on .9885 mills? Okay. Create a windfall for the city of Troy and its reckless spending. The money no longer spent on the library will be used for the Cadillac pensions and benefits of city employees and wasteful projects. Wrong. There is no money allocated for the library. Think about it. When there is no money, there is no money. When you don't have money for a car, there is no car. Next, expose the big secret that state law allows the library authority to double the millage. Act 164 of 1877, MCL 397.201. Wrong. Read the act. There's nothing in it that says anything about doubling the millage. By Michigan law, the millage amount cannot exceed the amount approved by voters. Also, by Michigan law, the board cannot issue debt, issue bonds, or raise taxes. They are not a taxing authority. I've been a resident for 34 years and I've tried to be as active as possible, even in nonprofits. You will never see those people at those events, only when they have to complain. Vote yes on Proposal One.
James Savage is our next speaker.
Good evening, there. Good evening, council. Well, I guess we've got another new name, it's bullies. Okay, at the last meeting, I was surprised and dismayed at the bitterness and anger displayed by residents against residents regarding the threatened closing of the library. During the last two years, I have seen council meetings in other cities that have become stormy, sometimes quite ugly. But the anger is usually directed at the council or the city management, not at other residents. I heard allegations of lies and misrepresentation, misrepresentation of facts. My opinion of the worst offenders of that is our city government. Try to get an accurate statement on how much Troy taxpayer money has been spent or earmarked for the transit center. I ask that question again. Is it one or two millions, 10 million, 100 million? The only answers we get is, well, most of it is federal money. We do not get an accurate statement. And I would like to see that statement in writing because, and with a total amount, so that we can now challenge, if we have any questions on it, we can challenge where that statement comes from. To separate our community into camps for or against the library is ridiculous. Everyone wants a library. We all want a library. The only issue is how it should be funded and whose responsibility it is. Everyone is entitled to an opinion and should be allowed to voice an opinion without being labeled a good or bad person. During the 10 years or more that I have regularly attended these meetings, I've seen how management hides money away in this or that fund or allocate millions of dollars to the Downtown Development Authority, which now we can't touch. It's like, it's not our money anymore. It is my opinion that if the city has $2 million to spend on a perfectly good intersection, it is their responsibility to, to maintain the city library. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Thomas Burke.
It's really interesting to see that the name-calling got started early tonight.
It's really interesting to see that the name-calling got started early tonight before the two high priestesses of name-calling could even get up here, but I'm sure we'll get to that before the evening's over. You know, we talk a lot a bit about facts, and people can get up here and stomp and scream and yell about wrong, but, you know, this is the Save the Library website, and here in the back of this, it talks about other communities whose library millage rates are from one to two mills. So either you can get to two mills, or I guess these other communities are violating the law. Don't take Troy Citizens United's word for it, and for gosh sakes, don't take Save the Library's word for it. Go to the last week's council packet and read the city attorney's write-up on it, and you'll see that the new taxing authority can levy up to two mills. This also says they cannot issue bonds. It also says that one of the similar libraries is Wicksum. But Wicksum issued bonds for their new library? You know, maybe the cannot is a technicality, but where there's a will, there's a way. And the hundred-and-some independent libraries in the state have built numerous new libraries, and they've done it with bonds. It's very similar. When you set a team of municipal attorneys at work, they will find the method. It's commonly known and commonly done. They can and do, get bond money, and build new libraries. The other thing I think is really interesting in here, there's a lot of words, but there are no numbers in this entire website. One of the things says, how'd you come up with the cost in the millage amount? The millage amount that's more than 25% above what the city was spending on the library before it made any cuts. It says the figures were derived from existing budget estimates and other library experts. So I guess that means, since we're all not library experts, they'll just keep it to themselves in a secret because we don't have a need to know. I find that incredibly interesting. So just as these other communities got to two mills, they're all higher than us, but they didn't start higher than us. They started lower than us, and it just keeps ratcheting up. When you create a new independent taxing authority, it never goes away, and once, just like the city of Detroit, it will all ratchet up to the top. Lastly, I'd just say, I wish the city manager would say the sun would rise in the west tomorrow, because anything he says is just fact, you know? And if he says we can only keep the library open if we get rid of police, I guess it must be so, because he said it. There couldn't be any other way to do it. It's just total nonsense.
Mrs. Stein is the next speaker. Former mayor, councilwoman Jeanne Stein.
I could easily entitle my remarks deception versus reality. So many items taken out of context. In 2007, 2008, a budget of $4.3 million was allocated to run the library at top performance, certainly responsible for our library's rating of 10th best in the country for our population count. Mind you, 10th best in the country. In 2008, 2009, only $3.7 million was budgeted for the library, causing the library to lose $600,000 in purchases of books, periodicals, and other supplies, but still operating Saturday service. This year, the library budget was cut again by $1.4 million. One-third of the library staff was laid off, leaving only six full-time employees and the remaining all-part-time staff with reduced hours and no Saturdays. In 35 weeks, the library will close. Proposal one on the November 2 ballot is the only item on the ballot that will keep the library open, restore services, and reinstate hours. .9885 mills will restore Saturday hours and previous programming. It will, excuse me, it will cover operating and capital costs and accommodate future revenue losses. According to the city assessor, our requested .9885 mills will generate $4.2 million the first year and will diminish in future years in accordance with property values. Our request is not for .9985 mills generating $4.8 million, as was reported in the guest opinion of this morning's Oakland press. And the argument about a book drop-off is moot. There is no book drop-off. It was never built. The project was canceled because there was no money for it. Again, .9885 mills is based not on state equalized value, but on the taxable value of your property. Look at your tax bill. I will repeat what I said last week. The assessed value of my property is under $200,000. The taxable value is only $89,700. When proposal one passes, I will pay an additional $88 in taxes. I think having my own library is worth $1.70 a week, a lot less than $200 I would have to pay to use some other libraries. Proposal one will establish an independent public library administered by a board of our peers, nonpartisan and unpaid, providing accountability and transparency, voted into office by us. The library could not be more public. This board is not without citizen oversight. They're subject to open meetings, guidelines of rules and ethics set by the Library of Michigan, and Michigan law says the board cannot issue debt, issue bonds, or raise taxes. Therefore, the millage cannot exceed the amount approved by the voters. I urge everyone to vote yes on proposal one and no on the other proposals.
Mr. Witt?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and counsel. Just want to say a couple of things about the tenor of the debate on this library proposals. Especially over the last two council meetings, it's become very clear, there's been a very clear difference between the tenor of the supporters of these proposals and the opponents. The supporters of these proposals have been angry, spiteful, demeaning, name-calling, attacking. They have gone out of their way to specifically by name, call out members of Troy Citizens United, call them liars, bullies, deceivers. Tonight, one of them called one of the members of Troy Citizens United disgusting. So really, it comes down to, what has Troy Citizens United done? Has anyone of Troy Citizens United come up here and called the citizens to save the Troy Public Library liars, bullies, deceivers, disgusting? No. So really, it kind of come down to, why are the supporters of this tax increase so angry, so spiteful, so hound-dogish up here at the podium in their campaign attacks? Really, because I think they realize the truth is getting out. The truth is, which they have never refuted, is that the city has not controlling their expenses. The city has not changed at all the way it's operated. There's still pensions 87% higher than the schoolteachers. There is still all sorts of raises. There's 13% contribution to 401K plans. We still have a city manager that makes over $220,000. We allow our city manager and our assistant city managers to moonlight all over the place as consultants. The city is just doing business as usual. Guess what? No one's ever refuted that. No one's refuted anything we said in the Troy Citizens United mailer about the way the city continues business as usual. So that's all established in facts. So maybe that's the reason they're so angry, because the truth is out and the truth hurts. But let's go to the library proposal itself. Once again, we really have two choices here on how we're going to save the library. We either save it through an ordinance, which requires the library to stay open without a tax increase, or we create an independent bureaucracy, a taxing authority, and increase the cost of the library and have a new millage. Now, remember, this new library authority will not own the building, the furnishings, the books, and the materials. Basically, they'll have to start over again to buy all those. The city, was the city going to give it to them, or the city going to sell it to them? Or we're going to have to pay for it twice? Once again, the director of the library has told us that the current library could be run for $2 million, yet they need well over $4 million to run this new independent authority. Once again, we really have two options. We're going to save the library either way. Either we do it with no new taxes or an unnecessary taxing authority with a new millage. Once again, Troy residents, save the library the right way and save your tax dollars. Vote no on these proposals, sign the ordinance amendments, and let's really save the library, and let's get this city's fiscal house in order. Thank you.
That concludes those that signed up to speak on our public comment. So we'll go to response or reply to public comment. Councilmembers, do you have questions from staff or comments that you wish to make?
Mayor?
Yes, Mrs. Bloom.
Mayor, I would just like to address a couple of the statements, because there were inaccuracies, and since my memo was specifically relied upon and misinterpreted, I want to clarify the record at the council meeting, and normally I don't do that, but...
Thank you, Mrs. Bloom.
The state statute does not authorize up to two mills to be levied, because the specific language of the proposal, of any of the four proposals, are limited to less than one mill. So I have read MCL 397.210A. It does not allow for anything over and above the amount that is approved by the voters to be levied. In addition, Mayor, there is no authority for a bond to be passed without the voter's approval. So I just wanted to make sure that those were clarified. I'm happy to answer any additional questions that councilmembers may have.
Thank you. Mayor? Councilman Howard Lex?
One, just to stay on that subject, because it has been mentioned in the public comments, is the issue of bonds, and I think we need to just kind of delve into that a little bit more. You mentioned that we cannot, I should say, the library district cannot issue bonds without the people. Is that what you said?
The library district?
You said that bonds would need to be approved, but the question, I think, that people were mentioning during public comments is who would issue the bonds?
If city council chooses to give a bond issue to the voters to build a brand-new library building, then city council has the ability to do that. I don't think that that is proposed at this point in time. The independent library board would establish, again, assuming any one of the four proposals passes, the independent library board at that time, and at the time that they're appointed, would develop a budget, and they would have to work within the amount of the approved ballot proposal.
Anyone else have a question? Councilman Kerwin?
And maybe back to the city attorney or just in generally. We had one comment that the months don't coincide with the collecting of taxes, and I simply wanted to point out that school districts often face the same thing with the hold harmless taxes, which go out for 10 years. So if a school district goes to the people ahead of time, within the year before that happens, they don't get to double-dip. This issue, this proposal, is for 10 years, the collection of taxes for 10 years. If this independent board went to the people again, it wouldn't be 10 years and now an additional. It would be at the completion of that 10 years, and then a new one should the people approve. Is that correct?
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes, it is correct that you, there is no opportunity to be double-dipping. That is correct.
And that was a concern mentioned from one of our speakers in front here.
Anyone else?
Madam Mayor?
Councilwoman Bellamy?
A question for the city attorney. We are constantly reminded that we have long-term employees who are being, having pensions funded, and we have paid those who have retired pension money, and we're not cutting those back. There is a reason for that, is there not? Can you enlighten us?
Yes, thank you. And Councilman Bellamy, you had asked me this actually last week. There is a constitutional provision, and it's Article 9, Section 24, and if I may just have a little indulgence, it says, "The accrued financial benefits of each pension plan and retirement system of the state and its political subdivisions shall be a contractual obligation thereof, which shall not be diminished or impaired thereby." There's additional language, but that's really the relevant portion of it. So it is, it cannot be diminished or impaired.
So really, what that means on the ground, then, is as we assign new contracts, that only handles those employees going forward. Every employee in a municipal contract must be given the pension for which they hired in.
Mrs. Bloom?
And if I may just clarify as well, I mean, there are some existing contracts, and there is no ability to impair those existing contracts. Now, there may be a voluntary opening of those contracts, but unless and until that happens, those existing contracts are valid, and there is no mandate to reopen those.
Thank you.
Mr. Zerlag?
If I may just add to what the attorney mentioned, given what Lori said, what we are engaging in, and what we have been engaging in for the past 12 years, is pension reform. About 70% of all of our full-time employees no longer have a defined benefit program. They have a defined contribution program, which means no legacy costs once that employee retires. Also, very recently, every new hire in the city of Troy that's full-time no longer is eligible for retiree health care. And I would challenge anyone else to find a city that is that ahead of the curve in terms of 70% of all their employees being a defined contribution, with all new hires being, or not being in a retiree health care account. Additionally, our entire building department has been privatized. Everyone there has been laid off or retired. Half of our engineering department has been let go. 60% of our planning department has been let go. All of our golf course maintenance operations have been privatized. All in all, I laid off about 145 people effective January 1, and that is not business as usual. That's restructuring to obtain sustainability.
Thank you. Did I hear Councilman Howard Lex asking for the floor?
You did, and one thing, I just, I seem to get in trouble because our motions apparently are not clear. Mayor, would you just be so kind as to clarify for the audience the steps that we took prior to public comment?